Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. Would you please stand and recite the pledge with us?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Miller.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
And Alderman Miller. Millers, excuse me.
Present.
And Mayor Bowman.
Present. Thank you. We do have a quorum. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. You'll see that we are social distancing tonight, so we don't have quite as many chairs as we usually have in here. I hope everyone has a seat. We also have hand sanitizer and masks for you if you so choose. You'll see that some of the aldermen are wearing masks and some are not, but wearing the mask is optional this evening. So we want to welcome you. We'll go ahead and begin. We have no ceremonial manners tonight. Puppet participation, did we have anyone submit an agenda request form?
No mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen, June 15, 2020.
Do they go through?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes stand approved. Under Agenda Items, the first one is the Alderman Liaison Position. That's fine, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, we received an action from you that due to Alderman Miller's change of work schedule, that he would be able to serve as the liaison to the park board. And Alderman Turner has agreed to accept that position as liaison to the park board.
And then also Alderman, Alderwoman Reese has agreed to serve the Alderman Liaison Position for Planning and Zoning. So I just wanted to make the board aware. I'll go ahead and take a motion to accept those.
May I have a read?
Second.
I have a motion for Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner to accept the Alderman Liaison Positions. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. I want to thank Alderwoman Reese and I want to thank Alderman Turner for accepting those. And Alderman Miller, thank you for serving as liaison for the past year. I appreciate that. The appointment to the Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board. You want to take that one, Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, ma'am. As some of you more tenured aldermen know, this has been a board that's been on the city ordinances for several years. It was a much more active board over the years since the last few months of discussion about moving forward on economic development opportunities. And then in your work session, you'll see the plethora of information that Jim Mark will be going over with you all about a new economic development policy. With that, though, the E-Z Board is a board that has been utilized in the past. It could be utilized again. There's no change in the ordinance required. It would be working as it has in similar past years. And at this time, we did get a submission from Bing that he would like to represent on that board. And the mayor, from this point in any of the other jurisdictions, will be sending us their appointment list of people they would like to serve on those boards as well. And again, Jim, I go over the, it's going to be more than just the Harrisonville School District as the boundaries go dramatically down past the southwest of our city boundaries. And so there's some other school districts that are involved in that, so they would be putting people on that board as well. But the biggest component of it is the city of Harrisonville. And so this appointment would be an appointment to that board. And I can answer any questions or Jim Clark's even here to go in depth if you want to on some of those questions that you may have on that. But he will be, as you know, in the work session in the informational packet that you received. Going over a lot of this in detail.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. I wanted to point out that Mr. Schimmelfanning is here with us this evening. He's back there in the back corner. Bing is chairman of the Harrisonville Chamber of Commerce. He is also governor for the Rotary. I can't remember the district numbers.
6080.
6080, thank you. And he's also president of the Coalition of Chambers. So I feel like with, he's also on the school board. So I feel like with the experience that he brings to us with being involved in the business community and the school, that he'll be a great addition to the E-Z Board. So I bring the appointment to you. If you have no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor of approving the appointment of Bing Schimmelfanning to the Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Welcome, Bing. Thank you for serving with us. Appreciate it. Okay, Brandon and April Polk have a goat request. Mr. Crowe, are you taking that?
Brandon.
Brandon, thank you.
We received in the city courts office a request from Mr. Brandon Polk, who is here tonight, requesting to have a miniature goat at his residence on East Elm Street. He's had the goat for several years and just had, didn't realize that he needed to get permission from the Board of Aldermen. Our code of ordinance does not address goats, but we, back in 2014, I think I put in the pack that you had to see that it was brought before the board then and we actually used the chicken portion of how we handled the chicken request. So we're using that for the goats. And that seemed to work then. It hasn't been a major issue for, I don't think, anyone. It's just a formality that we need to bring before the board. We would recommend that you would give them permission to continue keeping this miniature goat. And Mr. Polk is here. Do you have any questions from him?
Welcome.
Hi, I'm April.
Okay.
So we've had our goat for five years. He was attacked by a dog, so we called the sheriff to come get the dog. He almost killed, but the dog got in our yard, got in his enclosure, and almost killed him. Up until then, we weren't aware that you had to have permission. So then now we're here. But we've had him for five years.
Yeah, he's like part of the family. Immediately here and go home and tell my kids, we got to get rid of my kennel.
And you have all the info?
We have, yeah.
Yeah, we got signatures coming in.
On each side of us, in front of us.
Not a nuisance at all.
I mean, he was almost killed in an hour and a year, so.
Even the fence, we live on Elm Street, we're off from the cemetery. It's almost out of town, you know, and we just didn't know that there was a problem with it. There was an incident, we'll say maybe three years ago, that a neighbor was cutting grass with a zero-turn mower with the fence open. The goat and our dog got out, got picked up by the kennel and they didn't tell us. They didn't give us tickets or didn't say we had to get out of here, take it out of Harrisonville, nothing. And now I guess the new person that's running the shelter says that, well, the lady that was there before wasn't doing her job. Well, that's not, that's not our fault. You know, they should have said something to them. And now we're five years, almost six years in and saying that we possibly have to get rid of them.
Any other questions from the Board of Aldermen? I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Davidson. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. You get the kennel. Moving on then, Council Bill 27.
Council 27 is in accordance with the ordinance 3411 and to enact and move there are new ordinance regarding established procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for circumcisions and to bend the time in which candidates for office are required to file disclosure statements with the City Clerk, Monsieur Constable 027.
Randy, you want to address that?
This is basically just a housekeeping ordinance that we just need to update. We did it four years ago. I just have to have it updated. I'll send it into the Missouri Ethics Commission. And that way, only the mayor and the city administrator will have to do the financial disclosure. And you guys have been doing the shorting version and you'll be able to continue to do that, so.
Unless you all want to do the financial stuff.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, you want to go ahead and make your motion?
May I pose a prayer?
Second.
We need to move to second reading.
Okay.
We need a motion to pass at the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Okay, now I need a roll call.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill 27.
For second reading, yes. Constable 027 is in accordance with repeals ordinance 3411 and to enact and move there are new ordinance regarding established procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for circumcisions and to bend the time in which candidates for office are required to file disclosure statements with the City Clerk, Monsieur Constable 027.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
And Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill 27. Becomes ordinance number 3499. Council Bill 28.
Council 28 is the 2020 budget amendment ordinance.
Mr. Hart, good evening. Let's see if we can, we need some audio.
No muting.
It should be unmuted.
Technology is great when it works. Good evening, Ben. Mr. Ben Hart.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Okay, great. I really wish I was sitting there with you guys. Mid-year budget amendment each year. Finance, I understand in the past, finances come to you guys and as a best practice, come to the board with any kind of amendments that we see, that we need for the year. Obviously with what's happened over the last six months, this is a, I'm amazed at how little the budget amendments that have come forth with what's here. I've got a number of them here instead of reading down through them for you. I know the overall net add to the general fund is around $5,000, even though some of the items are larger than others. There's two funds involved, the general fund and the emergency services fund. On the emergency services side, the engine blew up in one of the trucks, so they had to replace that engine. In order to do that, they needed the budget to increase. So no fault of their own, that increase needs to happen. There's a number of items in the general fund, both personnel related due to COVID-19 and the reaction therefrom, including three tablets in the two vehicle printers. There's a number of items that we decrease or defund it as a result of, as a result of revenues and the outlook for revenues within the city. And those are capital in nature, items that are one-time that could be pushed to another year. So with that, if you had questions over this, I'd be happy to answer anything you've got.
Board, you have this in your packet. The budget amendment has been presented by Mr. Hart. Do you have any questions of him?
As Ben pointed out, it's pretty good on the city side that there's not major changes that we're having to do because the aldermen and the staff reacted really quickly when the COVID issue started and started pulling in our horns really hard and stopped all of the projects throughout the city, even though we've done minor things such as, you know, pothole or curb replacement, but none of our major milliner relays and none of our major projects, and we've held off on those mainly because we don't know the full effects of COVID. Ben will be giving you guys an update in the work session about those numbers. And, you know, we're cautiously optimistic. And the reason you say cautiously optimistic is, you know, cities live by month to month on what those are coming in. I know that a few years ago, I use my wife a lot of times because she doesn't like anything about government. And so I say, she says, why are all these cities having a hard time making their budgets work and stuff? You know, you get your money at the beginning of the year, you know what you got. You know, the cities don't get to do that. You know, we live off of what comes in each and every month. And we base our budgets based on trends. And so based on the trend, nobody was expecting COVID on the trend. But thankfully, because Harrisonville is cautious with our funds, we were able to stop in a quick manner and not have huge amount of effects. We're going to still see a lot of things that we have to do. Some of the things you're seeing here tonight, we're going to have to do much in the updating of technology. Jeremy has got a headache most of the time trying to figure that out. And we also have to get our buildings to where we can distance our staff in a case of these. So the good thing about that is a lot of these things, because we don't have the budget authority to do it or the money to be able to do it, that is that the COVID funds from the CARE Act that the county is managing. And we've already turned in our first request. And right now, how it's been working is the 15th of every month, we send in what that request is with supporting documentation. And then by the 30th of the month, the county reimburses those funds. This last, or the first one they denied, was it 20,000, Randy?
A little less.
A little less than 20,000 for reimbursement to the police department. And mainly it was personnel cost because if the chief can't have them there, how do you get someone from the police department to work from home? Can't really do that. But they said because it's technically budgeted for those salaries, even though we made the argument that, well, we didn't get any production out of them because they weren't able to work. They still did not reimburse us for it, but they did tell Randy, because Randy's our point person for all the departments. They sent all their documentation to him and then he submitted to the county. And they told Randy that they're not saying never on the reimbursement, but as of right now, they're not going to reimburse us for those funds. And so we'll continue to move forward with those types of things that we feel are COVID-related. And I, you know, I'm fairly confident at the end that they'll see a lot of it as our way. Because the reality is, the way that the monies are with most of the federal funds that go out is if you don't spend it, you have to send it back. Well, that's just crazy to me to send money back. So we need to be very judicial in our process to make sure what we're doing is things that we can really utilize to keep our employees safe and even more to keep the residents safe anytime they're doing any type of business with the city. So that's our main goal, is for our employees and for the citizens.
We have some increased payroll for individuals that had to go off on 14 days for coming back from a location of maybe exposed.
Yes.
So that's, I mean, you're paying overtime for that and that's directly COVID-related.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that argument, I'm sure you made that, but I think it needs to be made many times to prove that, I mean, that's a COVID-related expense.
They did reimburse us on the 14-day people, yeah. It's just the ones for social distancing in the police department. They didn't want to repay us for that.
I have a question. Are we going to start receiving?
Please use your microphone. Please use your microphone. Thank you.
Are we going to start receiving collection reports again for the boards in Fred Forum? Monthly collection report?
I haven't seen those in the past, but I can certainly discuss that with the administration to see what that looked like.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Ratliff or Mr. Hart? This is an ordinance. I'll be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to.
Okay. And who is the second? I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Turner to advance Council Bill 28 to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council 028, this is 2020 budget amendment ordinance, second to Council 028.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
And Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 28 becomes ordinance zero, I'm sorry, 3500. Mr. Crowe, we have a public hearing. Thank you. Welcome. Glad to see you again.
We've received an application from David Robert of Danal to rezone property, a little less than an acre tract that they're in the process of trying to acquire. 2801 Brookheart Drive, it's between, if you look at page 43 of your staff report, you'll see that it's on a tract that is between Brookheart and I-49 and presently zoned in M1 Light Industrial. They're asking to rezone it to R1 Single Family so that they can remove and abandon what I call blighted basement house that's been abandoned for a period of time, remove it over, I think, the next couple of years, bring the property back. They can't. And then build, I guess what would be their dream house, which is a preliminary sketch of it in your packet. They're currently caring for parents, so moving down here may be a couple of years off, but they'd like to get started on removing the blight, cleaning up the property. Even though it's zoned M1 in a predominantly M1 area, we think, we think it very unlikely that it'll ever develop as industrial. There's a deal of slope to the property. The track is very shallow, being between Brookheart Drive and I-49. So staff's recommending approval of it because of the reasons in the analysis in your staff report. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if the Danals would like to say a few words. And Mayor, this is a public hearing, guys.
Thank you. Any comments?
Just looking forward to being able to start the house down there. So it's kind of a fun project for us. We want to get, first thing, just get it cleaned up and put the fencing around the perimeter and, you know, start planting trees and that type of stuff.
Sure.
The things that just take time and then soon as possible, start building a new structure on there.
Welcome. Well, we're excited. That certainly eliminates a blighted area for us, so we'll be glad to see that cleaned up.
And in your staff report, you may have noticed the two emails from a next-door neighbor and a neighbor across the street that are very supportive and very appreciative of what the Danals wanted to do. They indicate that it's been abandoned, blighted on the neighborhood and oftentimes a temporary lodging place for drug activities.
Roger, what's the AG on the opposite side?
Uh, AG.
But what's there? I can't remember.
Um, on the opposite side, oh, that's a residence. And that's from one of the, even though it's owned AG, it's a residence there. And that is one of the emails that came in.
Okay, I missed that one. I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to Council Bill 29.
Council 29 is an ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, zoning 9.5 acres from M1 Light Industrial District to R1 Single Family Residential District at 2801 Brookheart Drive and establishing an effective date thereof. First reading, Council Bill 029.
Roger, do you have any additional comments? This is an ordinance. I'll be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to move to second reading.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to advance Council Bill 29 to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Thank you, Roger.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
And Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council 029 is an ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, zoning 9.5 acres of the, from M1 Light Industrial District to R1 Single Family Residential District at 2801 Brookheart Drive and establishing an effective date thereof. Second to Council 029.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
And Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 29 becomes ordinance 3501. Council Bill 30.
Council 030 is an ordinance to approve the Cedarhurst, Harrisonville final plat, a 9.3 acre subdivision at 2606 Rock Haven Road in the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri. Second to Council 030.
Roger.
Yes, this final plat removes a sanitary sewer easement across the Cedarhurst at Harrisonville site that bifurcated the side and it adds some utility easements. It meets all the design and subdivision requirements in our regulations. Staff recommends approval. Planning Commission and the commission recommend approval. Tina Charleville with Cedarhurst did ask if she needed to be here. Since there weren't any questions, the planning commission needed me to tell her. We didn't think she needed to drive in second reading, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Crowe on this item? Seeing none, it is an ordinance. I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to suspend the rule to a second reading.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Zaring to suspend the rule and advance it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council 030 is an ordinance to approve the Cedarhurst, Harrisonville final plat, a 9.93 acre subdivision at 2606 Rock Haven Road in the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri. Second to Council 030.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 30 becomes ordinance 3502. Council Bill 31.
Council 31 is an ordinance of the city of Harrisonville placing a monitoring on the collection of utility capacity recovery and second to the 25 residential living units in the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Mr. Ratliff.
Back in March, the mayor and I met with several of our local builders. One of the things that came up often was that the fees were, building fees were high in Harrisonville. What came out of that meeting that was very clear was it wasn't the building fees as much as what they term, utilizing the terminology of impact fees. We then met again two additional times with 14 local developers and builders and had discussions with them. Chris Arthur did a fantastic job of going through a lot of the data and information with each of those builders. And what we found is, and I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but it's a good indication when you look at cost of recovery for building permits in the Cass County area, Harrisonville by far is the lowest out of everyone. If you combine all the other cities around us in building permits, they recover 37% of their cost for their community development departments and their building permits. Harrisonville is 14% in recovery cost for those same.
Harrisonville is 14% in recovery, um, cost for those same amount of building permits. So when you look at the, um, amount of what the cost is for building permits, we're woefully, uh, way under in comparison. Of course, we don't want to be the lowest and we don't want to be the highest, um, but we want to look at, uh, doing those type of things. So Chris had presented that information and the builders had no problem with the, the building permits at all because that wasn't the issue, it's the impact fees. When we go back and do the impact fees, it's a lot more what Chris would call, uh, capacity recovery funds. And essentially, these are different in each development and most of them date back from anything to 2000, to 2005. And these, um, impact fees are based upon agreements that were made between the developer at the time and the city for infrastructure cost. But the problem with it is, is not knowing exactly where they came up with the formulas and where they came up with the data and where the city, has the city recovered any of those costs, isn't an issue today. Uh, all those things are involved, so it's gonna take us a lot more time as we keep going through it because I don't want to bring it to you all on these impact fees if we can't give you exact when and where, you know, as they would say in Who Shot John and all that good stuff. Um, the, so, we're, in the meantime, in that discussion with the developers and the builders, don't want to hold them up, uh, as we go through because the building fees, again, are not an issue to them. Uh, even if we come and increase their building fees, it's not an issue to them, it's these impact fees. And so back, we found in 2012, the Board of Aldermen did something similar in 2012 where they, uh, they waived these impact fees for the first 25 permits. And so what I had, uh, told the builders in these meetings is that I was coming tonight to you all to present these, this waiving of these 25 permits of impact fees. So they're still, they're still gonna pay, you know, building permit fees, it's just these impact fees only. And that will allow them to move forward with any type of housing building that they would like to do. And in Harrisonville, until we come up with the exact formula of what that recovery cost should be or should it just be a connective, a connection cost and not a capacity recovery cost? Or should it be a growth fee instead of a capacity recovery fee? And so that's gonna take us some time working through all the data and information and going back that far and moving that forward. So in the, in the effort of working with our local builders and wanting them to move forward to build, uh, in Harrisonville, uh, we told them we would do this. Now, you know, we also said, you know, this kind of puts the onus back on people that have been saying, because of these fees being so high is why they're not building. Well, if the fees are gone, then let's build. And, uh, so it gives you all also some data of information over these next few months, uh, if there's going to be, uh, this big of an impact that they, uh, that you've been hearing about. It's kind of similar to what you all hear about restaurants, and then Chris brought the, uh, information to you all and said per capita, we have more restaurants than anybody in the state of Missouri. And everyone's like, no way, and he read the list to you all and you're like, wow, so then it was, well, we need to tell people, what kind of restaurant are you wanting here? It's not that we don't have enough restaurants, but what kind of restaurant? And that's essentially what we want to do on this, is we don't want to hold them up, we want them to be able to build in Harrisonville. But at the same time, as we're working through it, it gives you some, some feedback as well as we move forward with these type of fees on things that you hear a lot and when you're gonna have clear data, uh, to be able to move forward on. So with that, that's why we're recommending these 25 to be waived on impact fees, uh, because we want the time to be able to, to study that and at the same time, not holding them up, and we want the, the housing to keep moving forward. Uh, is there any questions? I'll answer the best I can, and if not, I guarantee you Chris can answer.
Got one. What's the impact fee for?
Well, it's, what's the impact fee for? Uh, the impact fee was, what we're, what we're finding out was some type of, uh, recovery cost. The, the thing is, each impact fee is different for every part of town. But nobody knows why they're different for every part of town.
And there wasn't anything indicating that we had decided to do away with them and, and rolled the impact fee into the, the permit fee? That we did away with the impact fee before?
Well, I remember voting on that, but I think it was the same scenario of just for 25.
Right.
I remember rolling the whole thing together.
We did 100 and then we only had 10 left and we couldn't do them. And then we rolled the impact, we, we did away with the name impact fee from that last meeting, but they didn't like that. And so we rolled the fee into the building permit and did away with the thing.
It didn't happen that way?
Yeah.
No.
Because it didn't get rolled and it didn't, the name didn't even get changed.
There's not even a resolution that we did that, so. I remember when I was in Alderman, we, we waived some for the square, on the square.
We did the square, I thought we did some building permits, like 10 or 14.
Well, there's no record, there's no record of that, except on the square. But, um, but I'll say, you know, this, impact fees are for whatever the impact is to connect to our utilities. And in some instances, we had some, uh, properties that were being charged impact fees when the infrastructure was already there. So we had to take a step back, we wanted to talk to the builders and find out, what do you need from us? What's your feedback? What will get you building again in our city? You know, the realtors in town are screaming because there is no inventory. And we have teachers who are living outside of Harrisonville because there's no place here for them to live. So it's critical that we, that we find out, what do our local home builders need in order to be able to start building? So I was very encouraged by the attendance and certainly by the feedback that we got from these builders because they did, they told us exactly what they needed. And they don't have a problem with our permit fees and, and Chris told them that some of those permit fees will be increased and they don't have a problem with that. But they did have a problem with the impact fees and the fact that, that some of those fees seemed to be applied in a, in an unfair manner. So we said, what do you need? Would it help you to start building if we put a moratorium on 25 building permits? New building, not rehab, new building. And they said, absolutely, and some of them said they'd be here tomorrow morning to get them. So I was very encouraged by that and, um, so we bring it to you, just, um, looking for board support to be able to do that.
Because like you said, one of the builders that I happened to visit with said, you know, we're going into a development where all the utilities are already there. The developer put them there, why am I then again having to, isn't that what you're, you're double dipping, aren't you?
Right.
And it's like, oh, well, yeah. So that was, that was one of the, the questions that they had, and I thought that was very interesting, yeah.
And then, and a lot of it's an educational component too, as, as we explained in some of those meetings, because a developer can come to the city and he can make, you know, say the infrastructure's not there, he makes a deal with the city. When he sells the building lots, he doesn't tell the deal to the builders that he made. And then since this time, a lot of these developments have changed hands so many times that nobody knows why they made that deal and for the purpose that they made that deal. And so what Chris and Roger are really focusing on is getting their hands on actual agreements and actual, you know, signed papers that this is why it was done and that it was this for this reason. Because if we can't find that, then the city shouldn't be hanging their hat on something that has never been agreed to and it's just been kind of talked about over the years as it go, as it go down. The other good component of this is, uh, Burns and, and Mack has already been contracted by the city that's been doing the water and sewer, uh, rate study. And what we had asked them in this as well is, look at what these capacity issues are and what should they really be? Because it's not something that we should just be arbitrarily pulling, uh, a number from or even looking at a community next to us and saying that that should be because that's what they charge. We, it needs to be based upon what our infrastructure is, what our needs are, and what's a fair reasonable cost, uh, for those. And, and Chris will tell you, he don't like using the word impact fee. And, and it is, it is a dirty word to builders in town here when you say the word impact fee, they do not like that word. And so, uh, we're, we, we're, we're gonna name it something else and, uh, but we're gonna at least have a justification backed up by actual numbers that you all will be able to look at and it will make sense. And, you know, on the building permit side, not one of them complained in any of those meetings about the building permits. They actually all kind of, you know, shook their head and said, yeah, you guys are the lowest than anybody else. Um, but it also became the discussions about what we'll be talking for next year's budget about a comprehensive plan because, you know, they, you've gotta have a direction, uh, that the community's going. You've gotta have planned out train, the roadways for these houses that are being developed to get quicker access to the highway and all of those things that that comprehensive plan does. That was more their complaint, wasn't building permits. It was a, uh, these impact fees and a, and a updated comprehensive plan because the last comprehensive plan done for Harrisonville's been 2002. And a lot of things have been changed just by technology wise, uh, that's been changed since 2002.
The city's bigger than it was in 2002. Okay, any, any questions or comments from any other members of the board?
I was just gonna add, add to that, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The points that you make there, definitely, especially with passing the bi-plots in, uh, you know, there's a lot, I know a lot of the schoolteachers, administrators, those, uh, people that when they came to this district to work, there was not housing here. So they're going to leave some, if they're going Raymore, they're going to Pleasantville, they're going anywhere but here in Harrisonville. And I, I, I believe with the passing of that, you're gonna retain more, uh, more of our educators there, but also as we move forward as a city, like you said, you're talking as, as the city grows and as a Realtor, I'll tell you right now, there, there are people that want to not only buy homes in Harrisonville uh, and we just don't have the inventory for it, but, uh, you have people that want to rent as well and you don't have a big rental inventory either, so. Um, anything we can do to jumpstart that, I believe this is the next part of, uh, setting city moving forward is starting to get that, more homes, you know, more rentals, all of those on there because, I mean, we're just gonna grow even more as we move forward, so I'm all for it.
Thank you. All right.
25. After, okay, say we do this tonight and somebody, if we do 25, they're gonna come tomorrow and get, is that it? We can't issue any more past 25?
Staff can unless we come back to you as a board to ask you to give more.
We're not gonna sew this up for 25, we go farther.
Yes.
Exactly.
That was my thought.
I hope that's a problem, I hope I can write next meeting and tell you.
You know, you gotta ask those questions.
But we thought, we, we thought because the last time they put a limit with, the number was 25, we thought we could go with that again, but no, that's not locked.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, because I, I think that that probably is what's gonna happen and we are gonna be able to do it, that's what we're gonna do, let's do it as many times as we can.
Sure.
I, I'm, I'll be happy you're right.
All right, if there's no, I'm sorry, Mr. Crowe?
Before too many red flags go up on this developer's complaint that, you know, they felt like they were being double charged for something, I think that one's gonna turn into all the education category, I think that was regarding underground utilities and what we're gonna be able to explain is that some of those underground costs of utilities are to be done by the developer and some were done by the city. So before, like I said, too many red flags go up on that one, I think that's gonna be a matter of education.
I appreciate that clarification, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion number, say?
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner, all in favor of approving Council Bill 31, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Council Bill 31 becomes resolution 016. Alderman, the committee reports. Um, I'll start with Alderman Turner.
Been an extra week in there. Oh, the only we talked about, I mean, the only work we discussed tonight was the, uh, three flag. We discussed the three flag for them to be able to turn out and build our own, we put that for them, so glad to do a blighted area. Um, that, that's it.
Alderman Davidson?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say Chris Neal did a great job along with the staff on the Fourth of July fireworks.
Alderman builder? Yeah, we enjoyed the fireworks too, we still need them just to go a little bit higher or... We got one tree out there that just, it either needs to come down or, or something, so just a little higher would be great. Alderman Dorhaub?
We will once again be starting up the town hall meetings, so July 18th, uh, Saturday morning, we'll be hosting our own chief, Helfer. Be talking about police matters, so love to see everybody out there.
Alderman Zaring?
All right, the only thing I have is just, again, gonna give pats on the back to all the staff that's involved with, I know we are in a lot of, I guess, uh, unfounded waters that have been moving forward with the COVID stuff and the staff with all the work that they're putting into. I know there's probably a lot of stress on them, uh, to get things back to normal or to a new normal as it can be. So I just wanted to thank everybody that's involved with that for all that they've been doing.
Thank you, Alderman Reese? Don't you have a microphone?
Well, that'll be my last, uh, report on the rum cake project. And we have made over 80 rum cakes and we have gotten, uh, a grand total of, let's see, I don't know if we started here. Um, $2,200 when I turned in the rest of the money, net, that's not gross, that's net. And people, Harrisonville's been wonderful, I charge $20 for rum cake and they come up with 40 or 50 or 100. So hats off to Harrisonville folks, anyway, it's over, I maybe no more.
Thank you, you know, it's just so encouraging to see that this dog park project that Mr. Neal and everyone has worked so diligently on is supported financially purely by donation, you know, there's, there's no taxpayer money there, it's just purely, uh, built on love and rum cakes, so. Thank you. Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Ratliff, report from you.
Yes, um, since the, the last meeting, uh, Christian Morrow is, that was over at the, um, electric department is now over in the admin department, she replaces Dee, uh, there as the administrative, executive administrative assistant. And, uh, so you'll be seeing her in my office, um, uh, more now that she's moved over there. She's still working helping with the electric department too, because we don't want to leave them, uh, too shorthanded. At the same time, we also hired a electric superintendent, um, Andy Pollard is coming to us and, uh, Andy's got a plethora of, of experience running, uh, electric utilities, uh, in Tennessee and Kentucky and then, uh, did well enough that he retired and went to Florida and got bored and started helping, uh, Florida and was over the whole, uh, northwest, uh, section of the state of Florida. And actually was looking in the area for like systems that he likes running and Harrisonville was one of them, uh, and he applied for it. And, um, he decided that he did not like dealing with alligators and pythons, uh, online, he would rather fight raccoons and squirrels. And so that's why he's coming back to us. And, um, but Andy has a huge amount of experience, uh, on operations of utility and so, uh, we're excited about him coming on. He'll start on the 13th of July, uh, and he'll be coming, uh, to us. Uh, Tim Scott, who has been this, the supervisor in the electric department, uh, is leaving us, going to Iowa and he is, uh, his last day is on the 10th, uh, of July, so it worked out well to have, uh, Andy coming in at that time. I have, uh, hired a, uh, public works director slash city engineer, but I can't say who it is because he's informing the mayor and the Board of Aldermen tonight and his staff, uh, in the morning, uh, that he's coming to the city of Harrisonville. So I will send out, uh, information to you all, hopefully tomorrow, uh, of who the new person will be. And, uh, we're looking forward in knowing that, uh, they will hit the ground, uh, running, uh, for... they will hit the ground running for the city of Harrisonville. With that, we also continue on, as I pointed out a little before the meeting, when we saw some of the Aldermen, there is COVID-related expenses that the city will continue to move forward on. You will see different things in our buildings that are changing. I just wanna publicly say to the residents, we're not spending local taxpayer money for that. We are planning on spending federal taxpayer money for those reimbursements. The city of Harrisonville has up to eight hundred sixty-four thousand that we can receive in COVID-related expenses. And if we do not find those expenses to reimburse, then we send it back to Washington, DC. I do not want to send money back to Washington, DC. I'd rather use it here locally in the city of Harrisonville than them getting it back and spending it somewhere else in the country. And so you'll be seeing a lot of updates based upon, especially with technology. This room, as you see some of the change, is gonna keep changing as we continue to try to update technology purposes to be able to do what we need to do technology-wise, as I said earlier, to keep the staff safe. And the citizens, you'll see different things in the building happening and being replaced. And we are working on how we can get our staff even more socially distanced because of the requirements that are out there with CDC and requirements there. And also different things as a public entity that we can do for our residents to try to make them as safe as possible with these funds that are available. So we will probably hear people on the random rate page saying the city is spending all this money doing these things. And I assure you that we are utilizing COVID money to do that. And I will say, if someone really wanted to know, they would call and ask us and not post on Facebook. The, with that, in posting on Facebook, Aldese has not told us they're leaving and not doing their project. And I don't know where in the world this light signal is that everyone says the city won't pay for. But I've never been told that there's a light we need to pay for for Aldese to go in. And even if it was a light going in at that intersection, MoDOT would have to be doing it, not the city. So that's out there today. And there's a lot of people on there that seem to really think they know all the facts. And they have nothing right on it. So I don't know where I get that. But I wanna say publicly to anyone watching, I wouldn't listen to anybody that posted on that because they got something that we don't know. So no, Aldese has not told us they're not coming. And they've not told us they're not. And the city has never refused to pay for a signal light to get them to come in there. Just wanna be able to make that statement since people like to call me and say, did you see what was on Facebook? No, I don't really watch those groups because if they really wanted to know, they'd call or send an email instead of just posting on Facebook. We will continue to move forward with the additional things that you all did tonight. We will update the budget for the budget amendment and have that online for anyone to see. As I told you all, that's what the work session is after this. There's gonna be a lot of information coming at you all and a lot of decisions to make over these next few months as we continue to do the professional improvements that the board so desires. And with that, Madam Mayor, since I know we got a long night ahead of us, I'll stop there.
Thank you. I just wanna jump in with a couple of comments. I'll tag on to what Mr. Ratliff said about this room because I wanna thank the, I believe it was the public works department.
Actually, Water Division.
Water Division that came in here and painted this. It really looks nice. It's just a nice uplifting color and it just looks clean. I know the carpet's gonna be coming out. You'll be seeing a lot of things going on in this room. So I wanna thank the staff and I wanna thank Mr. Ratliff for being a forward thinker and seeing how we can spend that federal money to do something for our city. So thank you for that. I wanna thank Alderman Davidson, Alderman Turner, Alderwoman Milner, and Alderman Dorhoff for attending the workshop that the Armored Corps of Engineers held for us a couple of weeks ago with some report of their modeling study and some ideas on what residents could do to protect their homes. And I think one of the big takeaways from that was that if you live in that area, now is the time to buy flood insurance because we know that the mapping is all gonna be changing. And if you're in a flood plain and you wanna buy flood insurance, you won't be able to afford it. So it was a great presentation and I wanna thank you, Aldermen and Alderwomen, for attending. I wanna thank Daniel and Randy for preparing this for us. This is an updated manual for you. It has probably more information than you'll ever be able to read at night. But it's good stuff. And even if you've been on the board for a number of years, there's still good stuff that's added to this. So I wanna thank you all for producing that, Randy and Daniel. Thank you, guys. Okay, you have the June 2020 municipal court report in your packet. And now I will turn over to City Attorney Maurer for a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two items to surprise the board about and get some direction. The first involves Harrisonville Billis. If you'll recall, it seemed like we've been dealing with this forever. Most recently, you will discuss this in February. Harrisonville Billis had, we had asked them for solutions. We'd asked them to come back and make a proposal. And they did. Some of it was at least where you were willing to consider. We countered back and asked them to, let's get together, let's meet, try to come up with something. They came back with, we'll just build the road. We're gonna do it. And we said, okay, fine, commit to it, tell us when. Well, then it just became a litany of excuses, excuses, and that started in February. Most recently, on June seventeenth, I wrote to their lawyer and I said, enough is enough. The patience is gone. You have to either give us a firm commitment when it's gonna be done at finding it enforceable, or I'm gonna ask the board to give me leeway to start taking action to force something to happen. And that letter went out on June seventeenth. It was received. I got a call from the lawyer who said, hey, lawyer to lawyer, I understand from where the city's at. I appreciate that you've given us this much time. I can't get any response from my clients. So he basically shrugged his shoulders and said, I understand. Not agreeing that we're right, not saying go do anything. But he's basically told us, I can't get my client to do anything. So I'm looking for some direction. The last direction we got was, Steve, you can go work it out. And I think we've given them every opportunity to try and work it out, to get the road built. I don't have a list of items on recommendations yet on where we should go. But before I started that, I wanted to get new direction from the board and see if the board wants to just let it sit, wait for them further. Or do you want me to start developing an action plan which I could bring back to you in the honest? So that's my first item for the board. I'm looking for a little direction.
I have, I think you may have just answered my question, but the options that we have. Could you repeat our options?
Well, there are several things that, I mean, we could do. The first I think we would do is notify them that they're in violation of our city code and potentially cite them on an ongoing violation for better to construct the road. Another more serious thing that I would potentially recommend is that we notify their bondholders that they're in violation of city code and that it would most likely be a default of their bonds. That would be a multimillion dollar issue for them if they defaulted on their bonds. I would think that we should notify the State Department because these are all underwritten by the state of Missouri. And if the state would know that, wait a minute, they never satisfactorily completed this project, the state might lean on them and say, hey, you need to go finish this because your project is incomplete. And the last resort would be, we could file a lawsuit against them. That would be my last resort. I'd rather not spend that money and take that step until everything else is exhausted. But those would be some of the options that we could follow.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Did I hear correctly that there may be a sale of the property that they said they were going to build their next phase on?
It is my understanding that the abutting property is for sale. Mr. Wilborn does have it up for sale and I don't believe it's with Harrisonville Billis because there would be no reason to put it up for sale if they were gonna buy it. So that is the impetus to really, that brought this back to me is when he put it up for sale and, okay, I'm looking to move that, well, then the road's gotta get built by somebody so that you can access that property.
Which more than likely they had no intention of doing second phase anyway. Or he would be putting his property up or something.
So which option, in your opinion, puts the most pressure on them?
Well, if it would default their bonds, that would be, I mean, that would be, that's where the money is. If that would be a default, I don't know, but that would be one thing that I would explore.
I think in our last discussion that we had, we did go off that board. Didn't we? We said, okay, this is what we're willing to do. But I can't remember the specifics. I was looking back through my notes on what we went back with them. And I think it was just a timeframe, we wanted it built now and they were wanting to take up to a year to build that road.
Or three.
They wanted four. Actually, they wanted four. And we said, well, give us a proposal to get it done in two. And there were some other things we wanted and that's when they came back and said, oh, we'll just do it. And it was, okay, great, just tell us when. And then they said, well, we can't get bids because of COVID. And of course, cities get bids all the time. Well, you can't get asphalt because it was too cold or it was too hot or it was, I mean, it was just a thousand excuses.
And I believe you said last time as well that according to, I thought it was tied to the bonds, that they should, until they completed that, they should have received their full funding for that.
Right. You would help.
Okay, okay.
Were we given that in writing that they said we would do it?
I don't have it in front of me, but I would imagine that I confirmed it with Richard.
Isn't that an admission?
Would that not be considered an admission?
Could be.
I would say, yeah, we start with.
Yep.
Okay.
This is my man.
But I still, the longer we wait, the closer and the more real it would be that our citizens would have to end up paying for that.
Because you know, if someone else buys it and the road's not built, the new owner's gonna say, well, wait a minute, city, you gotta bring that road to me. You gotta at least get it to my property edge. Well, I understand that. I'll act on that. The second thing that I have, I have a letter I'm gonna share with everyone. Alderman Milner, there should be six there. What I'm distributing to the board is a letter that I sent to former Alderman Clint Long. If you'll recall, maybe some of you saw it, I've included it there. Mr. Long posted on Facebook or online a very lengthy diatribe about the city, actions in the city, but most particularly about our city administrator, Mr. Ratliff. And I don't often react to these types of things. They're, you know, we're a city where we have broad shoulders. We can handle things. But when statements are made that are just purely slanderous towards our employees, then I think it's incumbent upon the city to defend our people. And you'll see in his post, he not only slandered Mr. Ratliff, but he slandered some former employees claiming that they were terminated, claiming that they were run off. And there are slanderous statements made about Mr. Ratliff and his prior employment. And as an employer, if we don't stand up for our people, we're gonna soon find that we have difficulty recruiting and retaining people because I don't wanna go there if I'm gonna be swerved publicly and my employers aren't gonna stand up for me. So what you have in front of you is a post from Mr. Long and then my letter to Mr. Long, which was sent via certified mail. And I've attached the tracking so that you know that he received it. It was received on June thirteenth. My letter essentially identified six of the most or seven of the most egregious statements by Mr. Long. And I asked him to provide me within ten days any evidence that he had to support any of these statements. In other words, if he would contend that they were actually true, show me where. And all it would have taken is something to support, you know, one of these statements. And it would be, I would have been presenting that information to you. He has not responded. I've gotten nothing from him. There are many things that this board could consider. I mean, if you wanted to file a lawsuit for slander and libel, since you put it in print, you could. In all honesty, I'm not recommending that. I don't think it is worth it to sue a citizen and a former Alderman. But it is particularly egregious when it is a former Alderman who ought to know better. And these statements are just so untrue, they're just indefensible. And so I wanted to share that review publicly so that you know that your city defends its employees and it stands up for what is right and even our former employees because there's comments in there about people that have left us. And, you know, it hurts their reputation if you, as they head out the door, if you slander them on their way to their next report. And so I wanted everyone to have that so that you know that we take those kind of things very serious. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any recommendation you would make? I mean, he gave it ten days. He's obviously not very strong with it. It's almost thirty days. It's too simple of a recommendation.
I don't think so. I mean, I think we clearly, if we wanted to, we could sue him and we would win for slander and libel. But I don't, it's just not worth it. It's one of those where the juice is not worth the squeeze. I think that you now know that what he posted was untrue. If anybody thought that it was true, it's clearly not. And we proved that and we've shown that, you know, in the light of all you have to do is give me something if it's there, Mr. Long, and he brought forth nothing. So I don't think it's worth presenting, you know, to a court of law because I don't know that you're gonna get much beyond what you already have, which is he put forth a diatribe that was just blatantly untrue.
Harrisonville's swap and shop. And isn't it interesting that this came out the day of the elections? So that everybody in here who was slammed, he made it very clear who he thought he needed people to go vote for. I think that's just lowlife and I think that's just beyond words.
Stop.
And the grammar is more important. It's just really bad.
Well, you know, the thing that is disturbing to me too is as we talk about wanting to grow our city and the steps that we're taking, you know, to work with developers to get them building, this kind of stuff does nothing for our reputation. Does nothing for our reputation.
And the fact, and you hit it on the head, Steve. The fact that this is a former Alderman.
And I do know that the mayor of Peculiar and some Aldermen from Peculiar tried to get on there to take him on. And they weren't allowed to join that page.
Well, because if you put this kind of stuff up, that means you're not a big enough person to come out in public and verbally state your opinion. This is the coward's way of doing everything.
Steve, is there any way, I mean, we've got, is there any way to read into the record so the public can see this response and this letter? I mean, they haven't seen that.
That's a good idea.
Very good idea.
I think it would be important for, not just to talk about it, but I think it needs to be read into the record so that way publicly everybody knows what we're saying and why we're taking this action. Because a lot of people didn't see this. And so I think it's important that it be in the record.
We certainly can attach it to the record.
I understand that they pulled that off because I thought they pulled it off. Because I am a member on that. When people post things like that, you can pull it off and say, look, that's not what this is about. It's not a liberal platform or anything like that. It's almost as if we know that they pulled that off.
It was a toll that day. I don't know. It's full of that.
I didn't have anything for the red mayor. I just wanted to surprise the board with those two developments.
All right. Thank you, Council. Questions from the media? Nothing? Okay. Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Serry.
Madam Mayor, can we get a clarification, do you, does the board want that put in the record?
Yes.
We need to go on.
Alderman Davidson asked that it be read into the record as well as made a part of the record. Council, what are your thoughts?
I think it was just appended, just added as attention.
Okay, not to read it?
Right.
Are you okay with that, Alderman? Okay. All right, so we'll include the posting and the letter from Mr. Maurer to Mr. Long into the journal of the other evening. All right, now I'll take, do we have a motion to adjourn? Did we vote on that? All right, thank you. All in favor of adjourned, please?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned. We'll be back here in about five minutes for a work session.